Remember what it was like to be a kid? To explore and play. To roam free all day. In Jamestown, North Carolina, we get out of the grind and escape into the moment. People feel good here. Eat well here. Feel swell here. We go for a ride or an afternoon stroll. We cheer each other on. Here, a treasured history. Meets the energy of a town on the rise. In a place with true heart and soul. And where we have our own special beef. Jamestown, North Carolina, where history and possibility meet.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Glanville is absent. Councilmember Rayburn?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf is absent due to an illness. A quorum is present.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Do we have any items that need to be added or deleted from the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to request to remove the approval of easement agreement between the town of Jamestown and Barton Weeks from the consent agenda. To add the appointment of Brant Gomez to serve as a full-time planning board member as the last item on the consent agenda. And to remove the award contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder from the Main Street Waterline Replacement Project from the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
And I need to approve the agenda with those changes. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
Second. On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Katie, do we have anyone signed up for the public comment period?
Yes, Emily Wagner.
Emily Wagner, 205 North Point Avenue. My name is Emily Wagner. I grew up in Jamestown. I've called Jamestown home ever since. I love the people, businesses, and community here. I currently live in High Point. I just wanted to inform the public of several upcoming events in Jamestown with different organizations I'm involved with. The first is the 21st Annual Village Fair this Saturday, September 20th, held by the Historic Jamestown Society, which will be held at Mendonall Home Place across from City Lake Park. It is a historic festival with tradespeople and craft vendors. The second event is our inaugural Jamestown Fall Festival sponsored by the Jamestown Business Association, which will be held on Sunday, October 12th, from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the heart of downtown Jamestown at 104 East Main Street near the deck. There will be music, craft vendors, and food trucks. And then the last one is the Old Jamestown School Alumni Association in conjunction with the Jamestown Public Library for the annual barbecue at the Jamestown Library, which will be Saturday, September 27th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. I hope that you will show your support and come out to any or all of these festivals. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Good evening. Last month, I proposed a request to the council to bring on the agenda the issue of the 11 new positions that are on the, in the budget for this year. And I see that that issue is not on the agenda. So I take that as you're not going to respond or address that issue, which is quite disappointing because there are some very, a number of people that are concerned as to why it was stated one way before, and now it's still reflected that there's 11 new positions that are included in this year's budget. And to me, that's a misrepresentation to the citizens of Jamestown that you're not giving us an opportunity to hear specifically why it was presented that way, the way in which that it was not going to be those number of positions, but yet the organizational chart reflects that they are. So just know that it's considered a effort of insincerness on the part of the council not to address that issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Frederick, 500 Windwood Drive. Mayor and council, citizens of Jamestown, this is a message about following through, and it reflects Mr. Hensley's just made comments. In the minutes from last month's council meeting, minutes just approved by council on the consent agenda, there are two statements recorded that I would like to highlight. I want to highlight them because they are about citizen frustration with how this council operates. These are frustrations that I share. One concerns the petition circulated by Artwise and Mickey Wright, which reflects frustration over rising taxes, excessive spending, and the town manager's failure to perform duties effectively. The minutes from last month's council meeting state also that a request was made that this matter be placed on the September council agenda. The second statement I wish to highlight, again, concerns what Mr. Hensley just said, frustration about the lack of clarity regarding the number of new positions and funding for them. A concern brought up by myself as well in the May public hearing for the budget. The minutes state that after raising concerns in meetings with staff and correspondents, but without receiving clarification, Mr. Hensley requested that the issue be placed on the September council agenda to allow for explanation and public discussion. These two statements from last month's minutes are more than just requests. They are two examples of what council should be doing according to its own official comment policy, a policy first adopted 20 years ago in 2005. That policy states, Section 3, Part L, "Anyone desiring more effective and informed action by the council about specific concerns should raise them, and if staff cannot address them, then it will be placed on the council's agenda as early as practicable." As I have read the meeting agenda for tonight, I see nothing on the agenda about either of these two frustrations raised by my fellow citizens last month. My own frustrations with council are too long to list in the remaining time I have for this comment, but they include the over-two-year-old request for public records, records that will shed further light on why council accepted the bad development agreement from D.R. Horton after rejecting a similar bad development agreement from Diamondback. There's never been more effective and informed action by the council on that matter either, and I suspect the council was led astray, and I have shown evidence to the fact that they were deceived, as we all were, by the town's hired land use attorney. But this council is accustomed to ignoring my requests, so I hope my fellow citizens can get satisfaction for theirs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody else signed up?
Thank you. Matthew, your manager's report, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. Goes without saying that we're going to have a municipal election primary here on October the 7th. The Board of Elections does handle all of our election-related issues. We would encourage anybody with questions to please contact them for information, 336-641-3836, or by visiting their website. Early voting is going to be held here in the council chambers beginning September the 25th, and will run through October the 3rd. Once again, we'll open up here for the election day on October the 7th, and that's for folks that are registered in this, in this district. This will narrow the field down for the two council seats from 7:00 to 4:00. The town is in the process of selecting the design-build solution to replace and renovate the fire station, Station 46, and due to the weather at National Night Out, the Pine Crossstead Field Fire Department had postponed their open house to coincide with Music in the Park on October the 3rd. So you're welcome to come and take a tour of the station and see the trucks from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. here at the station right behind Town Hall. Speaking of Music in the Park, again, once again, we'll be having our grand finale, season finale, on October the 3rd at 6:00 p.m. at Ren Miller Park Cross Street, and this will feature 80's Nation. So this is going to be well-attended, weather permitting. It will be a big event. So we will be closing Guilford Road between Mendonall and Main Street because we will have a large number of vendors and some other surprises that are coming. So last year, we had the Ghostbusters. I think they're coming out again, and Batman. We'll have more details on the social media sites if you have questions about vendors. Speaking of parks, our Parks Director, Scott Coakley, is pleased to announce the grand opening of the playground, the nature trail, and the basketball court, which will be held on Friday, September the 26th. I said 12, 10:00 a.m. to noon. That is actually the time Scott has reached out to C.J. Green and Haynes Zedman to try to get their students to come a little bit earlier so they can have a soft opening specifically for those, for those folks. We are going to do a ribbon cutting at 1:00 p.m., and we're going to have music out there from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. That's going to be AM rodeo, which they weren't able to perform at National Night Out, so they were kind enough to move that over to our ribbon cutting event. He's going to have some food trucks. He's trying to get that, those details worked out, but we'll have those on the social media site. I think we're working on a flyer to get that out as well. I did want to thank our public services crew and our citizens for their patience. We had a storm drainage feature on O'Neill and Royal Road that failed. It was an unanticipated item, and we were thankful that our stormwater fund was able to be used to complete that repair. So I know that the road was closed temporarily for a few days while they were doing that underground repair. We had anticipated in introducing to you two new employees. One wasn't able to be here with us this evening, so Paul will introduce him at the October 21st meeting, but I'm going to invite Scott up to introduce one new employee from the Recreation Department, and if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them now.
Any questions for Matthew?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am happy to give Marcy some help in the pro shop and the rest of the staff in there. They've been hard at it, and the golf course has been super busy, but Evan, if you stand up, this is Evan Fall. He is a graduate from UNC Charlotte and majored in sports analytics, and he is, we're happy to have him, and I know that he'll, he'll be a good addition to our staff.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thankfully, our new employee from Public Services was able to join us, and so I'm going to ask Paul to come up and introduce Tyler.
Good evening, mayor and council. We have a new employee, John Tyler Chambers. I know we have a lot of Js in Public Services. He goes by Tyler, so that's going to be helpful. Today was his first day. I haven't really gotten to hear how it went, but we are excited to have him aboard, filling, you know, we have a few voids in Public Services that we're trying to get filled.
Well, you made it through one day. Welcome.
Super excited to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Well, do we have any committee reports?
No reports for Planning Board, but we'll meet on October the 13th.
Okay. Parks and Rec did not meet. Deputy Alberti, are you with us? Would you give us the Guilford County Sheriff's Department report?
Good evening. My name is Deputy Alberti. I'm currently assigned to the Jamestown area for the B Squad. For reports, we had eight total reports last month, three from a theft of, three theft of property reports, one burglary report, one vandalism, one fraud, one domestic incident, and one DWI. Last month, we had 76 calls for service, 122 self-initiated activities, an average response time of nine minutes, 49 traffic stops, and four traffic citations. Just a reminder for everyone to take their valuables out of their vehicles. Please lock your vehicles. We've had incidents where people are not locking their vehicles in other areas, and people are just opening the doors and taking stuff. So please secure your items and lock your vehicles.
Thank you. Elizabeth, are you ready to give us the update on the Fall Litter Suite?
So our event on Saturday, we had 44 participants. Thirty-five bags of trash was picked up. So in the past, each of the kids would take their own bag, and many times, they would be traveling in a group that there would not be full bags. So we had a conversation that we were going to make sure that we were filling our bags. So where you may have seen that there was a bag per person in the past, we're cutting back and trying to save some bags. So 35 bags of trash, 10 locations. Some of our high-trafficked areas with trash was along our East Main and Vicry Chapel, down from Lydia's Bridge over to GTCC. We did, of course, continue having a lot around the Dillon Road and Ragsdale Road intersection there with the library and the bank intersection with Shell and the empty lot. We always have a lot of traffic with trash on Scientific Street at Robbins, Kearns, and Shannon Gray area. I just want to say an extra thank you to the civetans. That is a very dangerous area, and they have always been so wonderful to respond and offer to do that, so that way we can keep our young Key Club and ROTC students out of those dangerous areas. The Guilford Road and Oakdale Road areas, we were able to do a lot of cleaning that would have been a spread-out area. So it's not a lot, but it is needing some extra attention, so we were able to go to those areas. And as I mentioned, the Key Club and the ROTC are always so good to help us. Of course, we appreciate the Brownies and the Girl Scouts for coming together. They are consistent in their attendance, and we appreciate that, as well as the civetans and our town council members and our town staff, along with, we had extra residents that joined us this time, new people that had never participated before. So I look forward to keeping them connected to upcoming events and shared with them that anytime they wanted to come by and pick up vests and gloves and bags, that I would be glad to help them with any areas that they think need to be addressed in between our spring and our fall events. So it was a great day, and the weather cooperated, and so that was a wonderful time. And so I appreciate the council and the staff to allow me to continue to do this. I so enjoy working with the people of our community and just thank them each time I'm with them to say thank you for keeping Jamestown beautiful.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for your work.
Thank you.
Matthew, we have approval of an amended utility payment policy.
In our continuous effort to provide enhanced customer service, utility billing staff have been working on methods to provide additional courtesy notifications to customers before their services are impacted. After careful consideration by the utility billing staff, they will now conduct a second reminder call to customers before the discontinuing of any water service. Second notification call serves as an extra layer of communication, aiming to ensure that customers have ample opportunity to address outstanding balances and avoid service interruptions. This change is directly in response to both customer and staff input and is intended to reinforce our commitment to compassionate and proactive customer care. I do want to make sure that I give credit to our front office staff, Tammy, Elizabeth, and Dana for coming up with this idea. It was a discussion that, that we had following the last council meeting of ways that we can improve customer service, and so this is an item that they came up with on their own to try to enhance what they're doing upfront. I do want to say for anybody listening or anybody here that if you have changes to your contact information, your phone numbers, please, please call Town Hall and let us know what they are, make sure that they're up to date, so that we can make sure that if there's any need to contact you, that we have that most up-to-date information. The changes have been memorialized in the updated policy, which is in the packet. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is that effective immediately?
It's effective immediately. We've actually already done it. We did it in the September, excuse me, in our last billing cycle. So they're trying to make that call on or before the 30th. I think they're aiming to get that in on the 29th if they can. It just depends on, you know, the dates, how they fall, but they're making sure that they are doing it early in the morning. This is another item that they came up with, they'd like to do that early in the morning so that the call can go out and that they're available to answer any questions that are precipitated by that call. So they've already done it once, and they're going to continue to do it. We just wanted to memorialize that in our policy. It worked very well, I will say. My understanding is that the cutoff list had dropped by about half. So that's a big benefit to our very limited customer, our very limited public services staff, who have to physically go out and disconnect water service and then reconnect water service. So it was a blessing for all of us.
Since this is new, Matthew, is there a way that perhaps, I mean, just temporarily, just a little status on how that's going as we continue on, see just make a number, how many times we have to actually use that, or how many residents are having to use it, I would say?
Yes, we will.
And that can be just temporarily, nothing on just, I just want to see how effective it is for the residents.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended utility payment policy.
I second. On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.
For the past several years, Bridgette Murphy of Blue House Bakery has cherished Halloween tradition in our town, trick-or-treating at the local businesses. The community-focused event has grown in popularity each year, bringing families together to celebrate in a safe festive atmosphere. Now Bridgette is excited to propose a new addition to this tradition, a fall vendor market at Ren Miller Park. And if this is approved, this will be the first year the market is held, expanding the event to include local vendors, food makers, and just be able to come out and enjoy the park and the rest of the festivities in town. The goal is to create a fun and welcoming space that supports small businesses, enhances the seasonal celebration. Ren Miller Park as the backdrop, and the proposed market aims to become a new annual highlight for the community. And Bridgette is here tonight. If y'all got any questions, but she's trying to get the special events permit, and I do know that she's already provided the certificate of insurance, and she's got a map and some other things if y'all are interested.
Yeah. Well, thank you. We did receive all of that information, and we did review it, and it was very thorough. So with that being said, I will make the motion to approve the special event permit request for a fall vendor fair as presented.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Thank you, Bridgette. This is a great idea.
It's very exciting.
Katie, do we have anyone signed up for the last public comment period?
Nobody signed up.
Any other business council? I believe we had a meeting that we wanted to review.
Yes, so prior to last week, Councilwoman Wolf and I met with a couple of citizens to discuss ideas for improving how the town works, especially as it relates to citizen and staff engagement. And so just some of the highlights, some of the things we discussed at the closed session that we held last Thursday were issues around code enforcement and how folks might desire better education around, you know, what types of ordinances we have and how they're enforced and that type of thing. We talked about having a centralized phone number and email address. We do work with Alliance Code Enforcement, but there has been some turnover in the staffing, and so if we had that centralized phone number and email that was housed at the town, that it sounds like that would make things a lot easier. Brandon Emery from Alliance Code Enforcement is going to attend our October meeting to explain the procedure for, you know, how, how his business works and how citizens can report any, any code issues that they see. And also, we talked about potentially having an educational session about code enforcement after that, if citizens desire that. We also talked about utility billing, which Matthew updated us on. So as he said, the staff has already implemented that second automated call that has, has been very beneficial for everyone. Also, we talked about having information in water bills on how folks can do auto draft with their bills. I think there's, there's still folks who may not know how to do that or not realize that that's an option for them. And also requesting that they update their contact information so we always have the most recent contact on hand. And also, we talked about researching. And also, we talked about researching resources available potentially to help residents with financial difficulties so that we could provide that information to them. And then the third kind of overarching theme that we talked about was improving communication, doing things such as reinstating the suggestion box that we had at the front desk, and then potentially having a task force that could review all of the citizen-facing policies that we have, so things like solid waste policy and that type of thing. And we talked a little bit about a customer service training as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other business? Any additions to that? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all.